You know, it's seven oh one. Why don't we? Open the meeting and I'll go through the agenda and give Kerry a chance to arrive in a moment. If that's works for everyone. So when Cam if.
Recording in progress.
Kerry is trying to get in, so I'll go ahead and do this while we do that. So call this meeting of the Winchester Planning Board for September sixteenth. Twenty twenty five to order. I'll start with just a roll call of who's present. Jack.
Here.
John.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Kerry, I see you just joined. We're just doing a roll call.
Where'd you go?
There you are, present. Excellent. So I'm just gonna quickly go through tonight's agenda. Ian, are you running the? The Zoom? Do you have access to put the agenda up or would you like me to do that? Perfect. Thank you. So tonight we have a public hearing. We're gonna start with special permit PB twenty five dash five, which is an application for nine seventy two Main Street, which we have seen last week. We're gonna continue with PB twenty five. Something's echoing somehow. PB twenty five desk six, which is an application for ten Converse Place, which we also saw have seen previously. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We have some board and staff updates. And we have additional business unknown to the board at the time of the posting, which we may actually have some tonight, which will be kind of fun. So that is our agenda for tonight. And with that, I would welcome a motion to move into a public hearing for our special permit. And so I take a motion in a second to move into a public hearing.
I moved.
Second.
And since we're on Zoom, we all have to do roll call. So Jack.
Here.
John.
Here.
Kerry.
Here.
Nick.
Hi.
And I as well. So we are now into a public hearing and I'd like to welcome Brigitte and Sid, who I saw were already here. They hopefully have the ability to unmute themselves. And if not, we have to give it to them or not. Now you should have the ability to unmute yourselves. Welcome and thank you. We typically do our second meeting of the month via Zoom. The reason we didn't over the summer is we had so few meetings, but so we get to see you both in person and over Zoom. So welcome. I know that Ian can move forward as needed to show the things that you've updated. So I'm gonna hand over the floor to you to talk about the changes you proposed. And then we can discuss them. Welcome public comment if there is any and then get really into some of the nitty gritty. So I hand it over to you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. We I'm, I think I'm gonna dive in right away into the changes and what we had discussed last time and we were, we are glad that we could address basically all items which we, which we have talked about and integrate all the com- all good comments you had. Maybe upfront, we also have seen in the meantime, the design review board. And this also has influenced our latest submission in a good way. And I believe you also got a letter from the design review board on hand where you can see what was discussed there, what you can see reflected now in our, our design. But maybe now to the very critical issues from last week. We, two weeks ago, we had, we, we discussed the handicapped access for the commercial unit, which was previously located the parking lot here in the back for the the ADA parking in the back. And we had an access from the, through the parking lot, through a hallway to an elevator. And we were not really happy with that. So what we did is we relocated the ADA parking to the very front to the street. I don't know if it's, if you can see that on the screen. For me, my Zoom bar at the bottom hides the ADA.
I can see it on my Zoom. I don't know if everybody else can.
Okay, so we put that in the, in the front, we were able to put that in the front and building in a ramp to, to a common platform between the residential entrance and the commercial entrance without compromising the space of the walkway of the, of the public. To do that and not ending with a huge ramp, we lowered the building into the ground more and having sticking out now only by twelve inches before we had thirty six inches. That helped tremendously with integrating a ramp, which is not compromising the, the appearance, the walkway and not taking too much room. We revised, I talked about the ramp. We did lower the building. We made the first floor a little bit higher to be more accommodating to a potential renter for the commercial unit because they often need more headspace for more ductwork or whatever is, is, is then integrated as a retail space or whatever it will be, but just to make sure it can be accommodated. I think we lost the site plan right now.
I think we did too. Ian, is that available or did you?
Sorry, let me try and get that back up.
Thank you. If you want to just go ahead and verbally describe some of the things and if you can, without the site plan, and we'll get it back up in a second.
We can, I can also talk about the, that we met with the Housing Authority and received the feedback, which we also integrated and we revised our affordable unit from a single bedroom to a two bedroom. Same location, but we increased the, the, the square footage. And we, this was, so we had a productive discussion also two weeks ago with John Cerber and. Okay, now we can see it again.
Thank you. Yeah, it's back. Thank you, Ian.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Quick question for Ian. Do we have the, do we have the letter from the Design Review Committee in our packet or in email?
We should.
It's in the packet, yes.
We also got an email of it too.
Okay.
We also had a more discussion with the fire department to and got also feedback from there and that we will implement the fire alarm, fire connection, life safety and all measures for the, for the permit drawings, what is required. We did get in touch with the, with the town engineer, Matt Schuman, for, for the water and drainage plan, water management plan. And we will continue working with the town to meet all requirements from the engineering department, DPW, fire, whatever is required. We did address, maybe we should, we should, maybe we should look at the, if we can, at the renderings before I move on to show more from the inside. So there were not many changes to this, to the landscape plans or that, that stayed the same. So maybe looking again at the, at the renderings where you can see that the building is lowered. So the landing there is, you probably cannot see my mouse, but describing it, the landing of, for the entrance of the a commercial unit on the left and the residential unit on the right has one common platform. There's a ramp visible on the left, a short ramp twelve feet long, which has, which makes access now better also for the residential unit, not only for the commercial space. So that was a good, that was a good move too, that we can address for both units. Landscape wise, it hasn't changed too much. We, we, we have the side triangle free of landscaping. We will continue having the, the screens for the, for the transformer, which is probably on the left side. We did integrate the HVAC units better in, in the roof where we, where they hardly will be visible. That was also discussed with the, with the design review board. That is mostly what I can say, what is interesting on your end probably for that.
Can you hold for a second? I need to. Taylor, are we set or do you need me to pause things?
You're okay for now. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna watch out for things.
Okay, I, I missed your text. Apparently someone was trying to zoom bomb us. If, if, if that happens again, I, I'll apologize and just pause the meeting if we have to do anything, but hopefully that's now been taken care of. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, I am sorry.
That's, that's fine. This is mostly what we, what we discussed last time and what, what is addressed now here in the, in the drawings. Was, was there also another rendering submitted? We can, we can look at, look at that we don't miss that because I think the renderings describe best how it will look like. Is there another sheet there or was that all sheets?
Ian, if you could scroll down, I think there's another, the back, that one there.
Right, so that is, so we, we, we we are taking the large, large front windows, the retail or commercial windows around Glenwood that because they have a visibility, a store visibility if you're coming from the town. Like last time, I, we showed that already that we took away the retaining wall, which makes the makes it much safer, but I think that was not a new change. In the back, it hasn't changed, changed too much. Just for, this is not really site plan review, but we discussed also the many doors which were in the, in the floor plan, which came out of a fire separation of the floor plans that we had, the elevator at a location which made it necessary to, to walk through basically three doors. In the meantime, we have reworked our, our floor plan, our layouts, that we have the elevator way more central and we can avoid that. This is not in these drawings reflected because that just got confirmed today by the code consultant we are working with. And we wanted, I can show it if you, if you want to, if I get sharing rights, I'm happy to show it. But that's also not necessarily probably super interesting for the, for the site plan review. So let me know if you wanted to see it, the revision, or if we should talk about the, more about the exterior.
Thank you. Anybody on the committee? Want to see that right now? No, I so continue then if, if you.
Okay, all right. So on the, on the left picture of the rendering, you can see a kind of small, very small, almost dormer like. This is the hiding of mechanical units. And you can see there that they will be hardly visible, particularly from the, from the streets, from the street side. If your eye would be at the street, you won't see that. And I think that is a, is a good visible visual solution for it to keep it all on the roof side and not bringing it down to the, to the street. I think that is mostly what we had from comments from what we had from last week. And I'm happy to answer any question which I did not answer right now.
Thank you so much. I, I'm, I'm gonna open up to the committee to ask you questions, but I want to start by saying I, I really appreciate your addressing many, many of the concerns that, that we raised. I, I I feel listened or heard, whatever the right word verb is, heard by you and I, I appreciate that. So and I, I suspect other members of the committee do as well, although I suspect they still will have questions as always. So does anybody on the committee have any questions? I have some, but I'm gonna let others go first about any of the. Let's start with any of the changes and then we'll open up to the, if there's questions from the public and then to us, public comment, excuse me, and then we'll go back to just overall the whole project. But let's start with questions from the committee about any of the changes that are here, if you have any that you wanted to propose. And I can't see all the hands being raised. So if one of you, if you, if committee members just wants to shout out to start and that's fine.
Maybe, maybe one comment on my end. If you could scroll, Ian, if you could scroll to the front because I think this is the more important what we are looking at right now with, with the ramps and such. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. So. Committee members, Kerry, go ahead.
I think that's a great improvement with the ramp and the common entryway. I think that looks really nice. I think, you know, if we look over the design guidelines for this area, I think you've done a really nice job of, you know, addressing the, the high points that we're trying to hit. It seems like you'll have a point of, you know, community aggregation. You were thoughtful with the windows, the, the ADA accessibility is an important precedent to set for the street. I am not the person to comment on sort of the aesthetics of the building. What was, what was, what were the takeaways? I know you moved the mechanicals to the back. That seems like a positive change. Was there any other feedback from design review in terms of the building aesthetics that it, it are outstanding or this is, this is all digested? For me, for me, for me, one of the things that I think about is the shift from the street to the modern color scheme and I asked, did you adjust it to this one? This looks more muted than before. And I'm curious about that piece and then anything else that you heard from them.
So we did, we did, we did have the same color scheme we had actually. It was, the color scheme was positively received by the, by the board. They requested to look at the middle part where we have the wood structure or the wood color to extend it to the left and the right to have not degrade, experiment with that. Also still what we are in the process to improve the site from, from Glenwood where I totally agree. This is not there yet. We will, we will work with colors to make that more attractive because it's a very visible site if you come from, from the town. They did have comments, yeah, they talked also about the ADA access, which was important to them, which we addressed. We talked a lot about the transformer screening, the transformer, we probably have to, not probably, we have to keep the transformer on, on, on the ground level. So we will have screening there wherever it's needed that we will need to put it. It's probably next to the driveway to Glenwood where we are also showing it on the, on the site plan. We will address that with, with screening and we.
There's no way to put it on that right, that more wooded right side or you're too close to the property line?
Or is it? It's, we don't, we might, we might not, maybe we need to. I actually don't know yet, but in, in either way, it will be, it will be fully screened. Yeah. We, we will also need to integrate the meters, for example, and that is also a good, good place if we can put it in the, in the back. That was mostly, they liked the, the overall layout. They said it fits well into the, into the street, into the street and the overall look, the height was good. I don't, I don't know. I don't think they, they had any other comment on, on that.
Great.
Yeah, for, just to add on it, in the end, what they said is that for the next meeting, they are okay with what we are presenting, but they want to have samples of the, the siding material and details of the windows which we're gonna be using. And also they want to know, I mean, the color scheme is color scheme, but they want to know exact name of those colors for the next meeting.
Okay. That's, I, I'm just making sure they're on making it a translation from, you know, essentially a, you know, drawing to a, to a building, but I will not worry about it if they're getting all those samples. Yeah, it's great. I think you've, I think you've moved this in a really positive direction.
Thank you, Kerry. Are there additional questions from the board? I don't know that we need to limit it just to the updates. If you, if you, if I do want to give public a chance to speak, but if you want it, we'll, we'll keep on doing this until we've sort of gone where we want. Jack, I see you raise your hand. So go ahead.
Yes, I, my, my questions do not pertain to the changes, although I second what has already been said by, by Kerry and Brian complimenting the, the changes. I like it a lot more now. I drove by again today and took a good look at the site and I realized that there, you know, the fully mature trees that are in the back of the site, there's a, there's at least one that leans way forward. And I'm wondering if that's gonna be impinging on your building. And secondly, there are a lot of branches that hang down. So I'm assuming that there's gonna have to be some pruning and, and maybe you have to take out that tree that's leaning forward. Have you guys taken that into consideration yet?
Yes, yes, we did. We, we do, we, so the goal is to, to keep as much screening as we can because it's, it's basically, it's, it's, it's good for, for screening, but also for, for the entire, entire building. I mean, why not using what's already there in landscaping? However, as you said, if there are trees which needs to have pruning also for safety reasons, we of course need to do that. But as a, as a, as a starting point, we put this tree protection into the site plan that we still have time to evaluate and, and, and see what exactly needs to be, needs to be done. But ideally, we're gonna keep on that site, on that side, what, what we can.
Good. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. I forgot to mention upfront, which I was remiss in mentioning that John Cortezus is recusing himself from this. So while I was asking around for people to speak, I shouldn't have been looking towards him. So. Nick, I, I promised you we would do design. Do you want to start talking about design now? Would you like to go to public comments and then return to design? Or do you have anything else that you'd like?
I have a couple of short comments, I guess, on the design. Is it, does it? Have there been changes to the windows? It looks like, anyway, I, I just, but my, my comments are that the, the picture that we saw last time, it doesn't really, it didn't really have relief in terms of inset windows, for example, or, you know, moldings, inset windows. Possibly, you know, a sill and lentil that projects slightly, or it could be a casing around the window. I wonder if you could, how, how, how would it look with double hung windows and divided lights? It seems like that would be more contextual to, to Winchester. Dormers are okay.
Okay, so addressing the windows, we discussed that with the design review board. And we did look at the, so a double hung window, I need to start from beginning. So it is going to be a passive house building. The passive house buildings need really good windows because that's where you lose a lot of your energy. The passive house windows are casement windows. They are not double hung because you don't get the rating in a double hung like in a casement window. This is simply a, a, a technical issue, how the seals work. And with that said, they are casement windows and they are two manufacturers right now in the US. And we are looking at US manufacturers because it simply makes sense not to import them from anywhere else, from overseas. And they are all casement windows who are producing passive house standard windows. It's Intus and it's, it's Alpen. And currently we are looking into both and one of them, we're gonna make the decision and bring, bring, they both have similar ratings and we will bring that to the design review board as a, as a markup, really a part of a window, an actual window, and will present them. They do, they are typically, and so it also, the building will have a four inch insulation, exterior insulation. And we will set the windows basically back four inches back, which creates a deeper shadow line so that the building, the windows do not look flat on the, on the front of the siding. This might be not fully a hundred percent reflected in the, in the rendering. However, I do think it is kind of a, it, it is visible that the windows are not sitting on the same plane as the front of, of the siding. That was for the double hung. So the casement simply worked better. For the mullions, if I look back at the design guidelines of Winchester and most of them have no mullions as well. So the, to combine the architectural style of a, of, of this building type, the mullions do not, we, we could do that, but they are not necessarily necessary for a good architectural style. And a single divider is, is equally good, which also gives more light in the end for, for, for the interior. That is basically the decision, which, which also was well received by the design review board. Dormers. We have the two or four big dormers in the front and the back and did the hip roof to ease up the the heights coming from Glenwood and also from, from the other side entering the town. I think that was a good decision, design decision. Even if we could build higher, the height of the building is not maxed out as it could be. So because it fits better into, into the street, street line.
The roofs, the roof lines seems very solid. I, I really like the gables or whatever those are called with the same pitch as you have. That, that seems on target to me. Yeah, there was some strange comment that said replace hip roof with a shed roof, which didn't strike me. I don't understand what that means and it didn't strike me as, it was, it was one of their motions that the desire of you wanted to replace a hip roof with a shed roof, which I don't understand. What, what is, what does that mean?
I, I have not seen the letter. So I, I have only my recollection of the meeting. I mean, the hip, did they say, so they say hip roof replacing the hip roof with a shed roof?
Well, yeah, which I don't understand. We can, we could scroll down to them.
I don't, I don't understand. And I mean, I, I think the roof is one of the best features. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not clear as to what they're getting at.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they were more on the modern line and the hip roof is, is certainly more a traditional line. That's why we tried to bridge the modern with the, with the traditional.
Yeah. Shed roof. And I really like the roof the way it is, you know?
Yeah, we, we, we have no intention actually to change that.
Right, right.
Nick, where was that? If you could help us.
Oh, it's, it's on, it's on the third page of the letter from the Design Review Committee and it just says a motion.
Okay, that was in regard to a different project.
Oh, a different, okay, all right, fine. Oh, okay. All right, sorry about that.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure we, we weren't confusing anyone with something that wasn't being asked.
Okay.
Because I didn't remember that.
I, I apologized. I, I think the roof is great.
Thank you. So Nick, did you have more you wanted to ask right now? We're gonna come back and have a chance.
Not right now. I'm, I'm good for, I'm good for the moment.
Okay, perfect. So as far as your, the, the changes that you've proposed, I, I think they're great. I'm, I'm really pleased with the changes. I'm gonna, before we come back for some discussion and more questions, see if there's anybody from the, open this up to question, excuse me, public comment. And public comment is not necessarily a question. It could be, but we might not have real time response with people. It's a chance for members of the public to weigh in on what they see. It's limited to three minutes per person and I will be timing them. I'd like them to state their name and address for the committee before they start. I'd like them to state their name and address for the committee before they start. Um, and, uh, I will, um, before we do that, point out that, to members of the committee, that we did. Um, receive a letter from, um, a, a resident on the street. That is in the packet, so you should be able to read that, um, and make sure that you've taken a look at that. Um, and the last thing I'm just gonna say is that if, um, bear with us, if somebody Zoom bombs us, we're gonna have to quickly stop, so please bear with us. Um, so with that, is there anybody from the public who would like to make a public comment? If so, if you raise your digital hand, um, we can recognize you and allow you to speak. So seeing none, oh wait, I, I, seeing one, um, Mr. Servier. Um, if we are able to allow, um, John to unmute. Um, uh, we know who you are, but if you state your name and address for the committee, um, and, uh, welcome.
Okay, uh, my name is John Servier. I'm chair of the Winchester Housing Partnership Board. I wanna just, uh, quickly, uh, summarize the last two weeks. At the hearing two, two weeks ago, uh, I clearly stated that the affordable unit, uh, to be provided as a part of this development. Uh, needs to be comparable, uh, to the market rate units. Uh, in terms of both the number of bedrooms and the floor area size. On Monday, following that hearing on September eighth, uh, Jennifer Caf- Jennifer Cafarella, uh, from the town manager's office. Uh, Assistant Town Planner Ian Sexton and I, uh, met for about an hour. With Bridget and Sid, uh, as the architect and developer. And, um, kind of walked through, uh, the various, really all of the requirements. Uh, associated with the affordable unit that are specified and, uh, by the executive office of. Housing and livable communities, and this includes the exterior of the unit. Uh, the interior of the unit in terms of the number of bedrooms, floor area size, uh, number of bed, uh, and finishes. Uh, includes the requirement for parking. The, the review process that's followed in terms of working with, uh, HLC. And, uh, the manner in which, uh, this unit would be marketed and sold. So, uh, it was a comprehensive discussion. The, uh. The affordable unit in the updated plan, uh, as Bridget said, has been modified. To include a second ba- a small second bedroom. Uh, however, the floor area size of six hundred ninety-six, which has increased. From what it was before, uh, is still the smaller than any of the market rate units. Uh, and correspondence received today, uh, that I've provided to the chair of the planning board. Uh, the staff person at, uh, HLC that we have, uh, worked with over time. Uh, wrote that they would not, uh, find the, uh. They would not find it acceptable to have the affordable unit be the smallest unit. Uh, and that's consistent with what I said, uh, two weeks ago. So, we need to, uh, do some additional work, uh, to make the affordable unit acceptable. Uh, toward this, uh, objective. The average size, the twelve market rate units, uh, is twelve hundred and thirty square feet each. Uh, the median size of the market rate units is one thousand one hundred and thirty-three, uh, square feet. Uh, so to, uh. Satisfy the state's requirement, and they use the word proportional rather than comparable. Uh, so they, they want the, uh. Floor area sizes to be proportionally distributed, uh, consistent with the market rate units. Uh, the size of them, it's recommended that the size of the affordable unit, uh, be increased. To, uh, to approximately twelve hundred square feet, uh, on that. So, uh. Thank you, uh, I'm glad to answer any questions, uh, that people have. And, and these comments are very consistent with what both Jennifer and I said on September eighth when we, uh, met with the developer and architect.
Thank you very much, uh, John. Um, I don't think, uh, I, I think that's a very important, uh, comment. Uh, we are likely, I'd hope I'm not speaking out of turn for the committee. To have a condition that whatever unit is chosen to be the affordable unit. Uh, be deemed accessible by, uh, be deemed acceptable by the EO HLC. Um, so on the one hand, it is important that we know, uh, which one it is. On the other hand, um, it'll be a condition that whichever one is, uh, selected will be acceptable to be included in our. And our subsidized housing inventory. Um, so, uh. That, that's certainly a next step to make sure that whatever unit is chosen for that, um, be deemed accepts, acceptable by them. Um, but, uh, I think you've just heard, uh, John, and so, um. Uh, unless you have any direct questions for him, as chair of the Housing Partnership Board, um, I think we can proceed. Um, just understanding that that will be a requirement. Okay, seeing no questions. Uh, thank you, John. Um, are there, uh, additional questions, uh, comments from the public? Seeing none, a closed public comment on this petition. And we can return to discussion of the application as a whole. So now is a chance for all of us to either talk among ourselves or ask questions. Um, I would like to, um, kick off with, um, a, a question, comment, request of you. Um, if you could go into the, one of the higher. Go up, I'm not exactly sure which one I, one that shows outside, um, like keeps on going up, uh, uh. Maybe that one right there. So, um, so one of the. Concerns or questions I have for you is understanding, um, the, uh. The movement of cars, the parking radii, the turns, and how cars will get in and out of this space. Um, and, uh, I don't know if you've done a parking radius plan for how these cars will get in and out of this space. I'm particularly thinking of, um, some of them on the bottom right. I can't quite read the number, but what, I'm not sure which number that would be. Um, uh, have you done any analysis of how cars can get in and out of these spots, uh? In order to actually have a safe access in and out? Um, it's, uh, I'm, I'm gonna throw that out there and ask if you've done that work yet. Yes, 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 please, please, by all means, sorry. I look, I don't need to be so formal, feel free.
We don't, we don't have, we have not done an engineering, um. Uh, engineering study to overlay it with the actual. But of course, in the planning stage, we do use our to- tools on, with our software. That we, that we assume a regular compact, uh, a regular car, not only a compact car, but a regular, uh, car. Uh, to get out, backing out, and having the turn, turning radiuses. If it would be a Silverado truck, uh, we would need to check if on the right side would really be enough space. For doing that. But for a regular passenger car SUV size, um, this does work. Um, at this point, I also wanted to mention that, um, with the. Moving of the ADA parking space to the front. Uh, we do have one space, and I see that that is not the right site plan because it still calls out the ADA in the back. Um, is, yeah, this is the right one, thank you. Uh, we ga- regained, so, so to say, one more parking spot, so. Almost all units have now, except for one, have a parking, parking space. So we improved that as well. I forgot to mention that. That earlier. Um, and the, the parking, the parallel parking on the outside. They show twenty-two feet long parking spaces for parallel. Um, we have done that before on a proj- project with the sa- with the same, uh, situation. Uh, which means the parallel parking, a longer parking spots than if you would do a perpendicular parking. Uh, meaning we, these parking spaces, yes, do work, to answer your question.
So, um, I think it would be helpful. Um, for me to better understand. Because I'm sort of thinking about a couple of things might happen, so I, I don't know who has the mouse. Um, Ian, do you have the control of the mouse? Can you move all the way over to the, the, the lower right-hand corner parking space in, in the, inside the building? Um, that, that, those two parking spaces right there. Um, so I'm picturing those two parking spaces right there. They back out into, um, into something. It's not clear exactly how they get out. Um, a- and I'm trying to understand, I'm just trying to think about, you know, this is a, a, a narrow road here. I'm trying to think how, the, I can't quite read the number, how the bottom parking space, if, if I pull up my own plan, I can read on my, on my own computer.
Eight is towards the lot and fifteen is parked against the building.
Yeah, um, how fifteen, if there's a car in nine, or eight, maybe that's eight above it. Eight, and they're the same household, that's fine. Um, and they wanna take out car fifteen. Describe to me if you can, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just wanna understand how fifteen gets out and what eight does, um, in order to do that. And, uh, it just seems really hard for those cars to move in the position that they are, especially given, um, uh, uh. What's behind there and whatnot, you know, snow, snow, uh, snow removal, trash, those things. I'm trying to understand exactly how that would work.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, the, the fifteen obviously can get out only if the nine is moving. Um, the nine is, has to, has to sway over. It cannot go straight back. It has to get over by the, by the trash cans in the void between the trash bins and the nineteen parking. Parking lot, and then make the turn. And then the fifteen car can come out and doing the same thing. Yeah.
For the nine.
They would use the void between the trash in the back and the nineteen parking.
Okay.
Right back to the dumpster and pause, and then fifteen has to somehow come out and make the turn.
Correct.
It's a, I, I think Brian's, well, I don't, it's hard without the actual car spaces, but visualizing it, that is not possible.
We, we can put cars in there to show that. Um, the, it's certainly not a convenient, it's not the, the suburban, uh, easy driveway. To get in and out, uh, quickly. It's more an urban, like more an urban parking spot, like if you look in Cambridge or in. In, uh, in Arlington, parking spots, which do come with, with densification. That the parking is not as much a space granted anymore as it, as you have it if you go further out. Towards four ninety-five. That is certainly true. It is, it is, it re- does require some, uh. Shuffling of the cars.
So I think my, my concern, which I, I, I'm, I, I, I raise it because I think it's certainly addressable. Um, is to, um, better understand, um, for you guys to better explain to us. Um, the actual turning radius of how cars could actually move in here. Um, uh, understanding, again, I have a really hard time seeing how eight can even get out with the trash there. But perhaps it's just a matter of the way the representation is here. I'm not an architect, you are. So you understand what's represented here better than I do, but it looks to me like I don't think eight could get out of there. But, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't need to belabor the point. I, I'd like to understand how the cars can get in and out of these spots. Um, uh, because one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the neighborhood was that, uh. That it's a narrow road out there, and that it's going to, um, they'd like to minimize, um. The number of, uh, cars that park on the street out there, and I'm trying to understand if, for instance, fifteen can get, if eight, if fifteen wants to go out. Does eight have to go on all the way up to the street, or can eight somehow go somewhere else and then fifteen can get out? Um, and then all of these, of course, happen at the same time as, um, if there's a loading vehicle there. Um, which I don't think will be all the time, but there will be a loading vehicle there from time to time. So I think that that will be, I think that's where my, my big concern right now, that, that's left. Because you, I, I'll say this, you've done a great job addressing my other concerns, so I'm now finding that my big concern left is how this parking works. It feels, um, it feels really tight.
So it is really tight, I totally agree. So parking the, the, if fifteen wants to get out. And eight needs just to move out of the way temporarily because they wanted to switch cars. So eight would turn around, passing by, getting backwards into the void between recycling. And trash recycling and nineteen, and then park for a moment or stand for a moment. Parallel to the, uh, to the building, but not going all the way onto the street. So the street aisle is wide enough with, uh, almost twenty feet, that two cars can pa- pass by. So where you see the ninety-nine, uh, two cars can pass by there. And then fifteen would go out and pass by parallel the eight, which you could. If you look at the, um, it says, uh, uh, service and loading, if you look at these dashed lines. This is where along this, this building, where car eight could wait. Until, uh, fifteen is out and then going back in, on the spot of, of fifteen.
Okay.
It does, it does require time, it's not in-out. This is correct, but this is what tandem parking and densification brings.
It would be helpful, um, if you could somehow graphically show that, um, and allow us to see the turning radiuses of these cars. Um, uh, for me, I'm just, I'll say this one more time, and then I'll move back on to the rest of the committee. I don't wanna belabor the point. I think it's important. I'm not actually sure how eight can get out at all with the location of the trash, um. And, and recycling behind it. Um, uh, but that's, you know, it, it looks like, I can't picture how a car could physically fit there, um, but. But I, 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 I'd rather have you guys actually, um, just get back to us and say, this is how it works. And then I don't have to spend time, and you don't have to spend time on the fly, you know, sort of saying how it works. You can show me how it works. Um, so that would be my, that's my ask, is to understand if this parking layout is actually feasible. Um, and then the only thing I would add is that we need to be crystal clear with you. That the choice of a, an ADA, um, parking space on the street is beyond the purview. Of this board. That would require, um, an act of the select board to do so. Um, uh, it's not something that we can grant. It's not something we can even, um, include in our plans. It would be something that they could. If, if you petitioned them, they could choose to do so, um, they could choose not to do so. So I just wanna be crystal clear on that, that we don't have any say over that.
But, but, uh, uh, qu- a question, how can we as the planner then, um, address that? Because we had the ADA, for that reason, we had the ADA parking in the back. And set up the entire design accordingly. And I do agree that the ramp in the front is the better solution, but I ca- it's very hard to have the ADA parking now in the back. If someone has to go in, in, walking impaired in, in any way going to the front.
Hmm, yeah.
So, i- it, it goes together. So either we need to go back and ha- and say we have the ADA in the, in, in the back. Or we do have, I mean, we can still have the ramp in the front, but it's not. We would need to grant access then in, in, in the back, which is really tricky as you, as we walked through the, through the design. So from a design perspective, now this is a much better design, but to address really the, the accessibility, fully the accessibility. We need to have that parking space in the front, on the street. I know it's beyond yours, but that's, that goes together. I just don't understand yet how we're gonna, who we're gonna ask and how we're gonna implement that. But maybe Taylor or anyone from the town can help us walk, walk us through that process.
Okay, um, so, so, uh, I, um. I think that m- my request, I think, is, is clear. Understand if this. I think that m- my request, I think, is, is clear, understand if this is a feasible parking um, um scenario. Um which I, I understand you think it is, and I'm not saying it isn't, I want you to show me that it is, is all. Um and uh, uh and that would be my request. Um but I'm asking, I'd now move to others on the committee, if they have questions about anything about this project that they wanna proceed with for tonight. Um we had started with the uh checklist, um which we'd made quite a ways through. Um now we've had some changes, but I, I wanna turn it over to the rest of the committee, because this is now our, really our chance. Um to uh, you know, we, this is, project is coming along, it's getting close. I don't want uh us to uh um lose our opportunity now to ask questions, so.
I'll tag on to your parking comment, I think your um description of the eight fifteen and the width of the driveway. Sort of satisfied my curiosity about how that would work, it would be a pain, but it would work. Unless there's snow, and so as far as things that are outside of your control. Um if we're going to be thinking through how we can get permission for an ADA space on the street, I think we should keep moving forward. I will keep saying this, with whether or not we can get, you know, some formal agreement for um folks to park. In the lot that's next door, but not, not empty, I mean, I think it's to the um, the daycare. Uh if we can get an agreement at least for snow parking, which would make it, because I don't see, I think eight and fifteen are spending the winter in there, but um. I think if we can take the pressure off by a formal agreement with a neighboring, however that gets hammered out. I know there's some interest on the select board and arrangements like that, and I think that would be a big relief to the neighborhood to know that there's some allowance for. Another off-site parking option.
Uh I have a question and also a further comment with regard to the ADA parking. If it's, I think the, the, the idea is sound, Brigitte, I like it. Um but my only concern is that if you put a ADA parking space on a public street. Anybody who has a, who has a handicap sticker in their car can park there, not just the resident, and somebody may. Live in a nearby place, in a nearby house, and they just park there overnight, and your, and your, and your resident is out of luck. So it, to your, to the, to, it would be more to the advantage of the resident to have the parking place on a private property rather than a public road. Just, I'm just making that point for your consideration. Um that said, uh if we can scroll down to where we can see the, uh I think it's the. It's the wall that faces toward town. The exterior wall. Get one more, they're, they're right there. Um Brigitte, I, I, um if I understood you right, the, you said that the design review committee had. Made some point about wanting some, some more, um I forget how you put it. Some, su- some, some other textures or colors on that, on that wall, cause I, as I look at it now. I think it would really be improved if you put some textures and, and, and um different colorations. On that wall, cause a, a solid white wall with windows is kind of boring, and it, it just dawned on me when I took a look at it before. Oh, I, I, I'm not clear on what exactly the design review committee suggested and what your solution might be.
So. Maybe, uh, okay, uh I tried to answer both of them, I, I agree with both, both of your comments, Jack, thank you. Um so the, the reason why the Glenwood is not developed as much as, as the front. Is simply that we were constantly still changing on the inside, our floor layout. Which drives the windows and, and we were simply not keeping up with, with all that. And they, the design review board didn't say, didn't make any specific recommendation, they just said exactly what you said. And what I, I also see is it's not there yet, and we are working on it, that it's gonna get better. Is it a kind of a, a, a three-dimensional part in the middle, which makes it better? Um is it just color? We don't, we don't know yet, but um there will be. Uh this one will still develop further to be better integrated also if we see it over the corner. Because right now we are looking more two-dimensional on it, we need to see it in the context also with the, with the front facade, that it's. That it's, that the side facade is also integrated. Yes, I absolutely agree with that, to uh develop that further, and we certainly will do that as soon as all the. Floor layout is, is set. Um that said, be, be, because as soon as you move a bathroom from, from A to B, just five feet. Then it, windows do not work and so on, so that, that, there is still uh work to do, but this is typically comes then also with the, with the permit, permit set. Uh the other part, eh, the ADA, ADA parking, the, the way. The requirement for this building is, is for the residential part, all ADA is voluntarily. So it's not a requirement by the, neither by the ADA nor Massachusetts Access Board. So the elevator is, is um, uh is part convenience, but also of course a good thing to have. And having it accessible also with the ramp in front is, is a good thing, uh definitely. But there is no requirement necessarily by the law that a, a resident ADA parking is provided. It would be good, of course, if the A, if, if someone is in need of that, having one of the parking spots. Maybe outside or inside um on, on the property. The front one is required for the mixed-use building, so the ADA is a requirement. Either it's in the back or in the front, but it, it is required as soon as we introduce the, the mixed-use retail.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answered the question.
I, yeah, uh yes, you did, and, and you, you guys did such a great job on, on fixing the front, I, I trust you'll do an equally stunning job on the side.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, um uh Nick, do you have further questions?
I, I just have a, a comment, I guess, I guess for the record and just, I feel compelled to, to make the comment. That it, it still seems like a very modern building, uh the front porches. Uh the upper porches, the doorways, the windows, and it seems to me like a waste of an opportunity. To kind of bolster the Winchester brand, as it were, by building something more contextual.
Fair enough. Um no question there, I take it. Nope. Um uh you're happy to address that, happy to not, um.
Yeah.
Either way.
I'm happy to address that, and it's, um I have to repeat that the guidelines uh written by Winchester. Uh are, and approved, are showing very similar styles in buildings. And that was our guidance mostly, to comply with the, with the guidelines.
Yeah, the guidelines are just suggestions, I mean, they're not, they're not perfect.
Let's save the clock.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you, um so I have um. One request I made of you, which is to um better, better understand the parking circulation. And um with turning radiuses of cars. Um to understand, just, just to, to satisfy that this, this is feasible. Um uh and it, and since you, since you believe it already is, I don't think that should be a heavy lift for you. But uh it would certainly be, it would be, go a long way for us to understand that this is actually feasible. Um and then the uh other thing that we need to have at least. At a basic level, um you know, requests um from uh the town engineer. Um is that we need to actually understand, even just at the very basic level, what the stormwater plans are for. Um I, I've not seen them yet, I, I don't know if you were waiting until you had better design, you know, better shape and size of the property before you worked on that. Um but I think that we would need to have, um uh we have a letter from the town engineer requesting as much. Um I think it would be helpful uh if we had um uh uh something that starts to address that. We don't need to have to, and we don't need to answer that, because some of that is just engineering, it's gonna be part of the permit. Um the building permit, but I think it'll be helpful for us to um understand and make sure that it's on the right path. Because if, if it doesn't, and it requires a change in the building, then it means it's gonna have to come back for us, and we'd rather not have. You know, once we get, grant the special permit, we'd like to let you go on your way and have everything move forward. Um so those would be my two requests moving forward. Um I, I, I'm just gonna say this because I don't, I think it might sound a little critical, we're always sounding critical. I, I'm thrilled, I think this looks great, I think you've listened to us, I think you've made a lot of very thoughtful changes, and I'm very pleased with the direction this is heading. And I'm hopeful that this is um, that we are um a fair way through this process, hopefully seeing the end very soon. So um uh uh sorry, you have your hand raised, and I'll turn it back to you, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, I, I wanted to address the uh, oh sorry, lower my hand. Uh to address the, the water drainage and water planning. So I, since I also talked to Matt Schuman this, this week and had a longer phone conversation with him. Um so the plan is that we are, and we are, we have engaged the, the uh, the civil engineer. Who is, who did the, who did the permit bla- drawings, which were submitted already to the, to the town. Uh for a very similar footprint, and uh Matt remembered that, that building. And we talked about that we are basing our, our site design exactly on that older footprint. Just adjusting it to the current um uh design, that we don't have the, the, the retaining wall there if anymore, for example. Or that the footprint is slightly bigger than, than it was before, but from a concept and approximate design. This will be our uh baseline, where we, where we base the new design, design on. And we do have the, we have the civil engineer, we have all our team, basically together. We were just not able to submit it on the nines, when we, when we had to submit it, the updated plan. But we do have that, this is all in, in the works al- already, and, and since we have a precedence already, which was in the building permit stage. Uh we are pretty confident that we can, that we can make it work.
Okay, that would be great, and um, um you know, the town engineer also commented on sort of the parking spaces that I commented on. In the letter and the packet, um so I mean, I think those are the things that are outstanding. Um other than you doing other additional design work on the side, that I think uh, I think it makes fair sense. That you're not gonna do a lot of design work while you're still really doing the windows, but now it sounds like you might um have some, a chance to address that a little bit further.
Right. Is it possible to get these comments from the, from the town engineer?
Absolutely, they're in our packet, so they're public records.
Okay, okay, I did not go in, in the package tonight.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'll, I'll make sure, um, I'll make sure that um someone gets them to you, um that they are, um, yes, is the answer.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Um uh anything else from the planning board or anything, any final? I, I mean, I, I'd like to, to have you guys back in three weeks and hopefully be like finalizing this all as, as efficiently as possible. Depending on, you know, what we hear back. Um uh thoughts from the planning board?
I think we're close.
I would agree, I, I like this very much.
Fantastic, um so with that, I do, does anybody, I can't remember what the date of our next meeting is, I believe it's seven?
Yeah, I believe so.
Go ahead, um.
Can, can I ask one more question on, on, on process, because we are, um so since, since we are intending to go under construction. Uh as soon as we can, and the winter is coming, so we are on a tight timeline now to uh, to move forward. Um if we, if we will be able, and I'm pretty certain we can. Uh having a site planned with the water and also the parking, your comments with the parking addressed. Uh are we likely to have a vote then next time, or is it possible to get a, a conditional uh, uh vote? Like with the housing or, or how, how does that work, that we get some planning? Um security uh or our schedule, getting, securing our schedule for, for moving forward?
So um that's a really good question, which I am going to um put on the spot. Um the town planner, see if he can address that as far as timing uh between. Um I mean, cause even if we did approve, we'd still have to write the decision. Um I don't know, I mean, and our goal would not be to slow you down, but I would um ask if um Taylor could address that timing. Um uh on, with the, the condition, if we were to approve this at our, our next meeting, which I'm not, I'm. Not saying that the board will, but if we were to, um what would be the timeline for um being able to um. Uh have them move on uh from us, that's all, I mean, we can't help what the building department does, but we do.
So based off of the conversation that we've had tonight, I think, you know, barring any, you know, significant changes over the next few weeks. I, I, I think we're, we're, we're gearing up for a decision on the seventh. I'm speaking as a, as a viewer of the meeting tonight, right? Things, things can, things can change, and the board can make their, their own, their own decision then. In the meantime, um we can work together to potentially start going, uh working with the building. The department on certain aspects of the project, uh to help you get ahead of, of um, of some of the things that you need to do. Of course, you won't have the, the, the permit, and there will be a twenty, at least a twenty-day. Um appeal period after the decision is submitted to the, to, to, to the town clerk. But I have, um I've given you my word before, and my word still holds, I will make sure to do that as fa- as, as quickly as I can. Um and if we can, space before the end of the week or early next week, I can help you get in touch with the building commissioner and see what we can do. Um in the, in the next few weeks, leading up to the next planning board meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
And Taylor, on that note, if, if with the building commissioner, we, we can take this offline, if we can have some kind of meeting with my project manager. So at least we are there, you know?
Yep, that's a good idea anyway.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Taylor, um thank you both of you for coming tonight, thank you again, uh I feel like a broken record, thank you for taking our concerns seriously. And thank you for addressing them, and I look forward to um, um seeing you in a couple of weeks. And uh, and I'm excited about this project, excited to help, um help it move forward, so thank you.
Well, thank you all, and I think um all the comments which you guys have given so far, we have taken it very positive. And those are very practical actually as well, you know, I always go back and say, yeah, that makes sense, you know? Uh ramp, you make sense, and then, you know, we, those four doors, and that was practical, you know, it was not. And I say, yeah, if I'm coming from elevator, I don't wanna have three doors to go to my unit, so. Uh these are all great comments which we incorporated, and uh we will further incorporate today's comment and come back to you guys on seven.
Thank you so much, um and, and good night, guys.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep, bye-bye.
And with that, we will move on um to um we're, have a, continue our public hearing. For planning board twenty-five dash six, this is for ten Converse Place, also known as uh thirty-three Mount Vernon. Um uh maybe more, more happily known as that. Um and I would welcome the applicants who, to be elevated so that they can. Present, we have your, um, we did get your update today. So I, I would suspect that most of the board has not had a long time to review um your update. But uh we also got the feedback from the design review committee, so uh we are uh have both of those. And uh welcome you to talk to us about um what, where you are right now. Cause again, we didn't have a lo- a lot of chance to look at this ourselves.
Well, thank you very much, it's great to be back, um and I guess remotely this time, so we're coming through a different venue. Uh we're um pleased to present tonight uh basically a recap of where we've been. Uh since we last met back on September second. Uh and also to address specifically some of the concerns that the planning board had raised on September second. Relative to the um setbacks uh along Mount Vernon. And subsequently, some concerns, questions about, can we uh also similarly look at the setback uh on the waterfront side? That came from the uh design review committee. So that's what our presentation does tonight, uh but just by way of recap, um as you may know. Uh after our meeting on September second, we met with the design review. uh after our meeting on September second, we met with the design review committee on September third uh and also the conservation commission on September ninth. Those meetings uh we felt were very productive and uh we think the project was well received. And look forward to um sort of continuing the process uh with them. We have another meeting of the design review committee on October first. And uh we're targeting another meeting with the conservation commission uh for October uh because uh we are processing our notice of intent, uh which was the next step in uh having that meeting. Along the way, we have other meetings scheduled. Uh thanks to Taylor's guidance, we have meetings with the uh CBRDS uh with town staff uh and uh and again, we'll presumably we'll be coming back to the planning board uh and conservation commission and the housing partnership and all the various constituents. So with that backdrop, we could pull up the uh presentation and if it's possible to elevate David Tobancon uh as well, he's gonna be doing the presentation uh primarily um with with me.
Yeah, David, you 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 can share.
He's elevated. Okay, great. Okay, so um you know, basically, we have the, we have the first um slide. We've uh, we made the bold move to rename the project in the spirit of renewal, but it's no longer ten Converse, it's thirty three Mount Vernon. Uh so we'll be going through the appropriate uh channels of DPW and the like to get that formalized, but we thought that would kind of be fun to to make it real for the first time in print. So the um maybe I'll cover the first few slides and then uh David can cover all the architectural. Okay, great. So then this slide is one which we presented last time, just as a refresher. Um the the building uh which gains resistance previously has been completely modified and shrunken down to live within our means. So we don't need any off-site mitigation, uh no uh issues with DEP. We can just do everything self-contained on the site. And the benefit of that is not only an easier path toward permitting, but also maybe more importantly uh for the community at large is a tremendous new open space and great new visual lines to uh Mill Pond. As you can see, we've reduced the building by over thirty three feet in width. The next slide sort of is just a reiteration of the same. And then this one shows from Mount Vernon uh the reduction and how that will sort of look uh in elevation. So you could see, you know, lopping off, you know, basically a third of the building and um improving all the viewing corridors accordingly. The uh next slide is um essentially a reiteration of the same, but it just kind of shows you a little more. The black is what will be existing. The red is what's kind of going away from what you've seen previously, but it's now time to sort of focus just on uh on the new. So we we highlighted that and um you know, although the next slide shows similarly the old and the new juxtaposed together. Um that, and then similarly, the next one after that. We then start to get into the actual uh, you know, new site plan. So if we look at the next slide, this is sort of, you may recall, the building completely uh took over almost all the green space. And now there's a really great bunch of green space. Uh particularly important is on the south side, the waterfront facing side. Um we are going to be you know, putting a retail bay there that the idea will be it'll spill out onto the lawn. You know, maybe, you know, people coming off the bike path can kind of hop over and come and, you know, have a coffee if it's a coffee shop or invite to eat, whatever's there. The landscaping um is there were some questions about that dark green landscape being, you know, sort of a buffer that prevented what we were just talking about. That wasn't the intention. As the project gets more fully uh vetted out, we'll have a much more robust landscaping plan, but the idea is to really have this be a great interface for, and of course, the residents that live in the building, but also the community at large to enjoy a new retail space that it is pretty unique in the fact that it's waterfront and can, you know, be spilled out onto a landscaped area. The two images on the right are just sort of inspiration ideas about what that kind of could look like. And then we pretty much show, you know, can you know, talk about again, the, you know, we've removed all the parking to refresh everyone's memory from the, from the grade level, put it all underground. Um the, you know, because the building is smaller, the parking lot is smaller, the number of cars required is are is fewer. And uh everything cascades in a positive direction to um meet the original kind of objectives of no first floor uh parking, all underground. Um some retail both on the front and the back of the building and the residential units sort of wedged in between facing the east side or the waterfront. The second, third and other floors, we could just flip through. There's really nothing exciting about looking at the floor plan other than maybe to note the articulation uh in a bird's eye view, but it'll really come to shine as David takes it away to look at the um the actual architectural renderings. And the study uh which we did to address uh the concerns uh about um how can we keep the building looking set in, maybe from just the top floor, maybe from the top two floors? And uh this study demonstrates that and David will take it away, please.
Sure. So first of all, this slide sort of summarizes uh three main schemes that we looked at. The first one that has the orange box around it is the one that you'll see developed uh in the further larger views. It's the one that we're we're recommending. It's our favorite, but just an explanation of uh you'll see the three same views for each scheme running across the top. The view looking east towards Town Hall. The second set of views are on Mount Vernon um across the street from the bank, looking south towards the Mount Vernon facade. And the third views are on Mount Vernon uh looking west from in front of Town Hall. And then the schemes, what differentiates them. Uh and we'll, we'll get into more some of the details about how we've done uh some things to mitigate the height in the schemes that essentially uh have the same massing as what we showed before. But this first scheme uh shows that we're striking a line of brick at the, above the fourth floor, all the way around the building. So you see that from the corner of Mount Vernon, you see that on the Mount Vernon facade and you see how it turns. So this is actually reducing the amount of brick uh that we had previously where we had brick, brick up to the fifth floor. Uh and articulates the fifth and sixth floor setbacks as all of this copper colored metal panel. And we think in this, it it, while it's not lowering this brick cornice at the fourth floor, uh yet it is um bringing brick down and holding it to that floor, which we think helps. The second study is is a bit more of what we had last time, so it does bring the brick up to the fifth floor, just on the front and back of the building. And you can see that in this view where this first setback, which in all of these is now set back a couple of feet more than we had, whoops, let me go back. Then we had previously, but it brackets uh this fifth, fifth floor with brick on the front side facing Mount Vernon and brick on the south side facing the pond. So just a little variation, but the math, massing is the same in these two schemes. Study B is what uh the planning board um asked us to look at. Uh and this is actually taking the line of the fourth floor and lowering it to the third floor. So you see in the front view, there's a step down in the brick. We're showing this setback two-story volume above staying as brick, but it's a little more modern and a little more setback. Uh you see what that does to the proportion of the Mount Vernon facade where there is essentially two stories above the retail base and then setback to two more stories. And then you see how that turns the corner. So it's lower along Mount Vernon, that cornice line is dropped to relate to some of the buildings uh further closer to the center of town. But then that, the brick volumes jump back up. Now, when we looked at this, I I think it's useful to see these together. We feel pretty strongly that this third scheme isn't great in terms of the proportion of the Mount Vernon facade. So our our preference would be to hold it up and we think by adding some brick detailing, which we'll, we'll explain and making some modifications to the base, we've made some moves in this scheme, uh the proposed one, which we think starts to mitigate the height in some ways by scaling the building a little better at that uh four-story brick height. So a lot to see there, but we can come back to this if you have questions about it. So we're starting uh with the first set of views and we'll walk you around the building. There'll be some distant views and then some new views you haven't seen before that are a little closer in to see some of the detail. But uh this is the view looking to down Mount Vernon towards Town Hall. A few things that you'll start to notice that we've refined here is that the textured brick base, which used to end just above the storefront windows on the first floor, now pulls up to the second story uh sills. And you'll see how that could gets continued around the building. And then above the third floor, the fourth floor sills, we've introduced a brick string course um with some recessed headers that very lightly marks a line on the building in the same way some of the other uh trip more traditional buildings in town have these subtle brick details to create shadows, but that line essentially strikes a line similar to the height of the white block next door and the lower two stories of the Brown and Stanton building on the corner. So you can see how that continues as we walk around the building. Again, the fifth floor, we've pushed back another a couple of feet to mitigate the height on Mount Vernon. But we're now showing both the fifth and sixth floor as uh copper colored metal panels. So this is a a zoomed in version of that base with the textured brick now going up to a stronger sill line, a continuous cast stone sill at the second floor, which we think helps uh helps with the height of this base relate to the buildings uh next door and also helps mitigate the height of the three floors above it. And this shows uh up close by the entrance, how the impact of of the curve of the facade and the folding back is really turning away. You don't even see it in this spot uh and opening up that view uh towards the pond and towards Town Hall. Uh this is a new view that you hadn't seen uh last time. It's a little distorted because of the wide angle view, but it's really meant to show the the three stories, the four stories of brick, the three stories um above this uh extended textured brick at the base. This new projecting uh string course at the fourth floor sills, which helps break down this three-story uh facade and relate it back to the three stories of the neighboring buildings. And then here you see the the copper uh at the fifth floor above, push back slightly. Uh and you, whoops, and you're actually, you know, this helps mitigate the height of the sixth floor above, which is just peeking over the edge here. And again, you're seeing the folding facade turning back towards the pond and the opening up of the views compared to the scheme that we had last spring.
And I wanted to just kind of emphasize what what David's saying, that I I believe it was the chair who requested uh us to really look at this Mount Vernon facade. And what struck me uh was when they, when they presented this new study, was it, I was like, well, it looks like a five-story building. And so, and in fact, you know, the you, you can't see the other story. It's, you know, quite in the distance. And the other moves that David mentioned, you know, with the brickwork and the modification of the first floor, we hope, um I'm obviously anxious to hear your feedback, that this uh sort of addressed the concern about how to make it feel as, you know, small as possible when experiencing it from Mount Vernon. We did something similar, by the way, at the request of the um of the design review committee, the uh and on Mount Vernon side, but we'll get to that next.
Yeah, on the pond, on the south side.
I won't interrupt you, cause I want you to continue, but Paul, could you just indicate who's in the room with you so we can have it for the record?
Yes, thank you. I should have introduced myself. Obviously, I'm Paul Munybany from Urban Spaces. Uh Dave Nodder, Urban Spaces, and Isabella Didi, Urban Spaces.
Perfect. Thank you. Just for our record, thank you. Go ahead now. Uh I didn't mean to drop.
No worries. Uh so this is the view uh further down Mount Vernon, looking back towards the center of town. And here again, you see uh the articulated textured brick of the base continues down these bays along the east side of the building. This brick string course creating a a slight shadow line continues uh down the east side of the building to help scale the building. And this is where you can really see how that line uh very subtly, but connects and creates a relationship to the top of the white building and the Brandon Stan building below the roof line, uh the eve height at the corner. We made some further refinements at the fifth floor uh and sixth floor to sort of simplify the detailing here, creating little projecting visors uh over the windows and and simplifying the windows of this floor facing Mount Vernon to relate to the scale and the detail of the windows uh on the east side. And then again, these um dormer-like volumes, which really came out of uh the twenty twenty-two design uh to address the design review or design um guidelines uh desired to have the building really celebrate how it meets the sky and have an active skyline rather than a blunt flat edge up at that uh uh top floor. And it's also serves to create private roof decks for these uh units at the top floor. Um again, you can see what we've done with the setbacks. Uh setback, the fifth floor, two feet more than it was previously. So there's a a five-foot deep walkout balcony there. And then again, um uh cleaning up the the setback at the sixth floor above. Uh this is a view from then sort of on the edge of the the pond um in the outdoor space or on the bike path looking up towards the corner of the building. Uh the bank on Mount Vernon is right here, so you're looking at the northeast corner, whoops, northeast corner of the building. Again, looking at some of the details of the textured brick at the first floor. We're looking at some very subtle brick recesses, an inch of shadow at the corners to help articulate these volumes. And then the recessed uh in and out bricks, um soldier courses that that we have articulating uh both the Mount Vernon and these bays and the south side uh that continues around the building. And then some walkout balconies on both the fifth floor and the sixth floor. So this is again a new view that you hadn't seen before. This is on Mount Vernon Street, walking, you know, coming around the corner of China Star on the left, looking at um the garage entry with this aluminum and glass door, a series of windows at the ramp. Uh the recess for the two handicap van parking spaces and a rear entry or drop off uh for the lobby. Um there's a trash room door, another window in the lobby and the and the lobby overhang. This also does a good job of showing these asymmetrical angled bays and how we really have done this so that these units aren't looking bluntly across the street, but have these angled views up and down converse from within the units. And we'd, you know, like to do casement windows here that swing open with the Juliet balcony railing, so someone could really stand out the on in that room and have a view of the pond. And again, the the fifth floor you're seeing here, but the sixth floor is setback. You don't see that. And then finally, the view from the Main Street Bridge. Um again, we've all the ma- made all the same moves here to try to mitigate this height with a higher base, the textured brick, this brick string course continuing around the building. Um cleaning up the fourth floor uh and sixth floor has been this has actually been pulled forward, maybe, whoops, forward a a foot or two to make a more reasonably sized um outdoor terrace here rather than previously we had something that was slightly oversized, so. Um but we've respected the design review committee's um desire to sort of not not add si- not add height uh on this end of the building, that this is just important view as as Mount Vernon. So we think we've addressed that. Um landscaping here, I would just give the disclaimer that this is not yet modeled uh per the the site plan with some, you know, buffers along the building with the outdoor terrace. Uh you're not yet seeing the bike path in here properly, but what we're showing is some of the existing uh you know, condition of of overgrowth along the city-owned or the town-owned property um along the pond here and more of a manicured grass in these areas we've defined in the site plan. So that is it. And why don't I go back to this slide? Cause I'm sure there will be. So that is it. And why don't I go back to this slide? Because I'm sure there will be some questions here.
Thank you. Thank you all for doing these three different scenarios. It's very helpful to look at it the way you've done it. I will open it up to the committee if they have any questions or comments that they want to make opening on this. I I welcome anyone. I I can't necessarily see your hands raised, so just start speaking and and you'll be recognized committee members.
I'm happy to lead us off if we want me to.
I would love that, Carrie.
Okay, sure. Is there? So you had a meeting with Concom and you said it was productive. Did they raise any concerns? I I believe the process is that we need to approve the plan and then your notice of intent can address sort of the specific building. Is there anything that they gave you a heads up about that we should know about?
I'd say the the most of the concerns were about things that we actually couldn't control. You know, there was a lot of discussion was about what will the bike path maybe? How will that be cleaned up or how will the area to the right of or the or the south of the bike path be cleaned up and things? So that part of the session, we just said, you know, that we kind of went through that already and we we learned that, you know, the town land is the town's land. And so that probably would be addressed better through DPW or some other mechanism. Along similar lines, what we can control though is the there was discussion about how would the the public interface with the green space. Obviously, we have this new great opportunity and we want to embrace it probably as as much as anyone, including the Conservation Commission. So that was where we sort of changed a little bit the 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 south side where we put in some of the degraded area that we're allowed to implement. We focus it mostly on that interface between the retail and the outdoors. So that's why we show tables and chairs, you know, it's it's very scarce. We can't use can't do too much, but if we're going to do it, we're going to do it there. Because that's an important place for the Conservation Commission. I think, you know, for the for the community and the building at large. Because that's where the exciting interface will be. So we were asked to focus more as we move further on the along lines on the landscape plan. So people can really, you know, get even a better understanding of how the green space, which is now reborn, how that will work. But I'd say for the most part, and that those were the main main topics. I obviously not them to speak for themselves, but I think it was quite well received. We were encouraged.
That's good. That's that's that that is music to my ears. The designs are beautiful. I I I think you've put a ton of thoughtful work into this. And I am obviously like I will. I will celebrate this shovel to the dirt like no one else except for probably Larry. The can we get? So again, this is very tall and you're doing a beautiful job of mitigating it and you know, as we think as a planning board about what what does this mean for our town and what what are we doing? You know, let's say, you know, I'll I'll let you dare to dream for a second that we just approve this right now. What does that do for every building on the street? And I think this is an interesting parcel because of all of the wetlands issues and because you occupy this corner that the height is, you know, to some extent, an allowance of the fact that you don't have the breath. But can you give us a sense? Because I think this is something that everyone mentions, how tall is it? How tall is it? Can you? We have most of the perspective drawings that we have are kind of down the street. And I know it's because you can't just like take the firehouse out. Like, how how tall is this compared to the peak of Town Hall or compared to the 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 building two doors down or the firehouse? Like, where are they roughly at the second or third floor? Is that sort of where they compare for height or is it?
So yeah, David, maybe could you go to the drawing where we go head on from Mount Vernon? Because that's the one that I was most impressed with.
Okay, yeah.
Sort of there.
Yeah, so we lose the two points that I'm trying to.
Yeah, so Paul, with your permission, I can pull up the elevation drawing.
Oh, yeah.
The site section drawing, which I think is helpful to see.
Yes, we anticipated your question, Carrie.
Okay. So let me.
The surprises at least, looking at that.
And these these were drawings that you know, we were asked to do in twenty twenty-two and have updated them. So here's the the elevation and you can see the baseline, the fifty feet fifteen feet roughly corresponds with the base of the Brown and Stanton Building and the white block. The forty-eight feet is roughly, you know, slightly above the roof of the Brandon Stanton Building.
Okay.
And in the range of the higher points of of Town Hall. And this third floor brick line, which is very light here, I can flip to another drawing where you can see it more closely. But that is roughly the height of like the top of the white block and and the thirty-two feet, basically.
Okay. That's really helpful. Okay, so I would say only that the 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 brick portion of your building is is beautiful and it's thoughtful and it blends in pretty seamlessly. And because this will, this will, when we were looking at it right now, this will now be a defining building in the landscape to really make sure that we've optimized, although we've sort of stepped it back and it's hard to see from most perspectives, that cap is really important. And I am a million miles from architecture, so I'm not all I will say is that the cap is something that I'm sure everyone will be thinking about. And I don't know.
Yeah, I I think I I would just say that I think the argument here for having this height on this site versus setting a precedent for every other site in town is that this is a site that has a tremendous open space on one side of it and it is at the scale, at the monumental scale of that space and of the Town Hall and the library and and, you know, the the school in the distance. And that I think is what differentiates it from, you know, the CBS building being rebuilt and being up at this height. But I think that this the height that we've struck with the strong brick at the forty-eight feet probably becomes a good reference for the future of that's where other buildings may try to push up to, I would expect.
Yep.
I'd say too, if it's helpful, maybe David, if you could please switch back to the other drawing where we show the the crown. We we focused a lot on this, maybe maybe even the other. I guess that's a good angle too. We focused a lot on whether that should be brick or a copper colored. And, you know, you saw the difference in the study A versus the proposed. And we debated it quite a bit, but I I think we landed at the right place here because it differentiates, it breaks it up. And it's not a monolith that it could have been becoming if it was all brick. So hopefully, you know, you agree, but we did put, we did put a lot of thought into the crown, to your point.
Yeah, no, I I like I agree. I like the.
And I think the copper is at the right place.
Yeah, I agree with that. So then in terms of in terms of you know, sort of building this, I mean, the the shadows are kind, you know, you kind of just you'll just shadow the firehouse, you know, the the sun is sort of on the side of the pond. So that's not a big issue in terms of sort of what you'll be, you know, kind of impacting with the massing, but the the process of building it. So I know the existing building is is just not great material. And then during the course of the construction, we're going to have to be who organizes the fact that you can't leave material on the site because it's a wetland, but moving trucks in and out constantly is a little risky to the firehouse. Like, who who organizes that?
So we'll be working with a professional, you know, general contractor, construction manager. Probably one that we've worked with in the past, you know, and we we have been, you know, doing this for twenty years now in very tight urban locations primarily. So for us, this is this is like Nirvana because we have, although you do note some important concerns.
I think that I think you'll be the only person that ever refers to that this project that way. But your optimism is really infectious.
But we will take special care. We're we're used to working along, you know, we we have a project right now along with with David and his team on the architectural side along the waterfront in Boston. We have experience working in the wetlands, very tight urban infill locations. Obviously, important safety considerations with an active converse place for China Sky Takeout and the like. So we'll we'll ensure that, you know, we have a construction plan, we'll review it with ISD, have it approved, you know, and so on.
Okay, I I think that's it for me for right now, but I'm this is this is exciting.
If I may.
Billy, go ahead.
My compliments, David, on the on the on the variations. I when I first looked at this this afternoon, I was really taken with study A and B, particularly B. But when you discussed the or when you got into the detail of the changes that you made on your original proposal, I was starting to you started to turn me because I really liked the 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 you know, the the echoing of the details on the white block and things like that as as you as you explained and I I I I think you almost sold me on your on your new proposal on that one. Although I do like the setback on the on the on the fourth floor and study B, but I could be persuaded. I have a question, though, about the overall height, your 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 elevations that you showed briefly there showed sixty-nine feet. But I think, Paul, last time we talked about it, it's it's higher than sixty-nine. What is it seventy-one, seventy-two?
No, that was that was actually an error. I think someone, Carrie, it may have been you, was looking at a dimension last time that was seventy-one eight, but that was the width of the building, not the height.
Okay, gotcha.
So it is it is sixty-nine to the roof.
Okay, so I have a question for our town planner. This is a PUD district, so the heights that normally would apply in other parts of town don't apply here. Can you, Taylor, can you explain to me what the allowable height is in this PUD and secondarily, what kind of leeway the planning board has to grant applicants? If they exceed that height?
Yep. So this is a a PUD three, I believe, under the 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 central business district. And under a special permit, which the applicant has applied for, there is no height limit to the to the PUD. So under a special permit review, the planning board can come to an agreement with the applicant. What the appropriate height is based off of its architectural design in the in 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 this PUD.
Okay, and how does that pertain to FAR?
FAR is capped at three.
Okay.
By special permit. It's normally two. The PUD allows the allows the applicant to go up to three with special permit. Which they have applied for.
I think we're I think we're in good shape then here.
Yeah, we're we're at two points, two point seven eight currently.
Good. I have no further questions. I just, again, my compliments on the work, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Nick or John?
Sure, sure. I just had a a couple of notes and they're they're not perfectly composed, but but I think I think there's a, you know, I think we're we're getting there. There's a lot of enthusiasm, but just on a more sober note, we're not quite there. We we still have I would say the roof needs a lot of work. We just have to make sure, well, parenthetically, I I would just make sure it complies with design regulations. We might need some sloping, but I I think basically with regard to my comments, we want to have a dominant form, some shape that organizes the whole thing and there's no organizing shape to the top roof. It needs some slope, I would say. Currently, you could describe it as blocky or choppy, chaotic or harsh as opposed to gentle, maybe aggressive as opposed to gentle, edgy as opposed to contextual. And really, the roof should dominate. There should be a dominant roof line. We need a clear, visible roof line and it should be sloped. If you look at Brown and Stanton, it's it doesn't have a pointed roof. It's a flat roof. But it just looks like it's slope because it has that slope on the on the edge on the side. And I think that would that would be you know, that would kind of help the 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 top floor kind of be a little more cohesive. And, you know, maybe a little less choppy. The lower levels come a long way. And it it really, I I really, I I like the there's almost a cornice at the top of the the first floor, first four floors. The copper colored metal on the top kind of you know, it it makes the building look like it's just a four story building in many regards. But just in terms of the top floor, I mean, that will be as much as it's setback, it will be visible. It'll be visible from the Jenk Center. The bridge and major major vistas will see the top floor. So I think that's something that really needs a bit of work. It would be nice to see some slope. You might even be able to get some additional square footage out of it if you use a little slope. You know, it may it may mitigate some of the you know, need to set it back as far, but those are those are really my thoughts, I guess, on that, but it really needs kind of a a dominant form. It's going to just organize the whole thing and and organizing shape to the roof is going to be, I think, really important to making it a a blockbuster. But, you know, but it's it's exciting. It's exciting. I just wanted to come with a more sober perspective because we're we're still on the path to 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 reaching the pinnacle of what we want.
Yeah, and I I'd say I think there's there's certainly more details that will be figured out and developed as we go. There there is a bit of slope on these dormers, which is very subtle here, but they do step down. That's something we had done in the twenty twenty-two at suggestion, but we could look at, we could look at emphasizing that a bit more. In twenty twenty-two, these vertical sections in between these things, these volumes that we're calling dormer-like was also slightly sloped. We didn't study that here. I think the feeling was that the configuration of this somehow didn't require it as much. But we could certainly look at that.
I mean, if you look at a place like Paris where they do have very strict height controls, they have all their tall buildings in one spot. But then you go into the kind of the regular part of the city and you see something almost like this with four floors.
That's right.
And then you and then you see that articulated roof. And I think it really could be used to great effect to to see the to 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 kind of maybe look at your previous, what you've done and and see if that could be incorporated a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you, Nick. John, do you have anything you'd like to say or ask at this point in time? I I'll I'll have some things that I want to go to public and then we can wrap up after that, but I just want to give you a chance as well.
No, I I like the building. I think we made a lot of good progress. I know that I assume designer view wants to see a wall section, some materials probably, and that will, you did confirm that is copper to be nice.
Copper colored aluminum panels is what we're what we're.
Oh, not not copper.
Not copper, copper. We'd blow the budget, but we we have a we may we mentioned it to designer view committee when we met with them is that we we've done some projects. Project in Four Point Channel in Boston where on the upper floors, a building called FP3, we used copper colored panels like this and with maybe three different, slightly different colors. And it creates a a bit of, you know, it creates the look of weathering or variation over time by having that very subtle difference. And that shows a little bit maybe in in the rendering where you see some of the panels are slightly different. So it's it's a way to get that in, get that effect and not deal with the the oil canning of thin copper or the degradation that can happen over time with copper.
The color is certainly nice.
Okay. So I would like to ask you just quickly before we go to any questions of the audience. If you could go back to the three different scenarios that you did, because I appreciate that you did that. You did that at our request. And I'm not gonna lie, I think that what looks best is what you've proposed. I think it looks better than study A. I think it looks better than study B. I think it looks better than study B. Um, I, I. I still worry about the height rate on the street there of, um, uh, so I'm torn because I worry about the height rate on the street. The rest of the buildings on there are three stories or no more than three stories. Um, and that'll be a four story. It'll, it'll give the appearance of a four story building. Um. But I think it. Dare I say, I think it looks the best of all three. Um, uh, so I'm. I don't know what I think other than that it, it looks best. Um, I think that, uh, if it's going to be a. Four story building on the street. At, at the appearance of a four story building on the street, I think it's all the more, more important. That, um, you consider backing up, um, the, uh, just a little bit more from the street, the fifth story. So that, um, pretty much anywhere from down on the street level, you. If you see the fifth story, you barely see it, um, as opposed to, um, uh, you know, here you're always going to see it from this view. Um, but I'm talking about if you're across the street at the firehouse, um, and you look up, the feeling is of a four story building. Not a five story building. Um, and I think it's close. It's, it's just hard to tell because we're looking at this. I can't. Put myself standing on, um, the fire truck bay and look across sort of like, yeah, um.
Yeah.
You know, I, I.
So I.
I, I don't get what I'm trying to say is I, I, I appreciate that it looks better as a four story building than the design as a three story building. I just wanted to look like a four story building that.
Yeah, so I, we, we can look at that. The two things I'd, I'd say is the more we push back. The fourth floor, the more you're gonna, uh, the fifth floor, the more you're gonna see. The sixth floor popping up. And the sixth floor is just backed up to where the elevators are. So just to explain our dilemma, because we, we studied this. If you look here, you know, it's, it's a very narrow space between. Where this setback is on Mount Vernon and where the elevators are. And if we went back, say another four feet, then we don't have a viable rooms here. And we don't want to go all the way back because then you've got the blank wall of, so we, we, we can look at that. We can see if we can squeeze another foot or two out of it and, and what the impact is. But that's just what we were struggling with in terms of how to make, how to set that setback.
I, I, I respect that and, uh, far be, if you go down to the ground floor, far be it for me to ever question an architect and engineers because I'm. Well, I'm an engineer, but not that kind. I assume that the elevators have to be there. Like that there's, they can't go over two feet further. I'm, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there. I realize.
This is the, the trick is the length of the parking ramp. So. That's, that's actually what's setting where the elevators are in the building. Unfortunately, it would be great to get them deeper into the building.
No, I respect that. Um, thank you. Um. I, I, you, you guys are the architects. Take a look and see, um, and see how we can, um, uh, best visualize accurately. What it would look like from across the street and I, and you got a good, you got a pretty good image there. Um, and, uh, I think that's what people are going to be. You know, they're going to see it from far away, like Nick said, and they're going to see this fifth and sixth floor. I'm concerned about what it looks like from up close. More, I'm concerned about both, but more concerned about that.
So we, we, we'll pull those views. I, I suspect. A real view from up close, even across the street, the fifth floor is actually going to go away more than we. Show it in that view and the wide angle lens may have exaggerated a bit, so we'll, we'll take a look at it. And see what we can do. I, I also think, um, this view. Whoops, I think we should pull another view from back. At the, at the rotary, because then you're seeing the Brandon Stanton building. Which is higher than the white block and it puts this in the, in the kind of broader context, so we can, we can have those views.
I think that's helpful as well. Thank you.
Okay.
So, uh, with that, I.
I was actually, excuse me, I had a question about, on this view, we're, we're looking east on Mount Vernon. On the top floor, um. There are no, you know, windows on that top floor. I was wondering what was behind that wall.
So that's the elevators.
Uh huh.
And then the, and the egress stair. So. This is really, you know, that top floor is biased towards the Mount Vernon side of the building. Because. It's essentially a single loaded corridor and all the units are facing. This, this was what happened when we narrowed up the building. We can't have units on both sides. Uh, so what you're seeing is sort of, you know, some, we, and we can look at maybe squeezing that back a bit, but some volume. At the stair and, and elevator and then corridor and that allows us to hide. Uh, rooftop mechanical units behind that parapet rather than having up them up on the sixth floor and screening up there.
Yep. That makes sense.
Uh, but we can look at tightening that up.
I wasn't, I was thinking about it. Not looking so, uh. Like a blank wall, kind of industrial, something to. Just imagining what it would look like, you know, won't look. It's just flat, you know, it's flat.
Yep, so I, I think we can look at actually narrowing this up and maybe getting some windows into the stair, which, which would help. You know, create a little lantern up there from that view.
Something, yeah.
Bring some.
And I don't, I understand, uh, I don't want to move the elevators. It would shatter, but just. Something more ornamental.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to move now to give a chance for public comment. Uh, keeping in mind that we just saw this, um, design, the, some of these changes for the first time today. Um, and so therefore you guys have only seen them for the first time today, but I'm going to allow three minutes. Um, per individual, if you could state your name and address for the committee. Uh, and, uh. I see that Bill Band has his hand raised. If we could allow him to, uh, speak, that would be great. I'm timing you, but I'm totally not gonna. Like need to. Think, yeah, there.
Okay.
Perfect, go ahead.
Hello, uh, thanks for the opportunity to provide a, a comment on the. Designs for thirty three Mount Vernon. My name is William Band. I live at, uh, sixty one Hutchinson Road. I'm a town meeting member from precinct five. And I am a member of the Winchester Conservation Commission. But I'm providing my, uh, comments as a citizen. Who's lived in town for thirty one years and has followed this project very closely on a personal level. What I, um, want to talk about and ask the planning board to consider is. As you're reviewing this project, how does this project advance or deter? Two long-term goals for the Mill, Mill Pond area that are called out in the Winchester Master Plan twenty thirty. And I know that several of you are very familiar with that master plan because you wrote it. And, um, I, that's the context in which I'm going to make my, uh, my comments. There are two particular goals in that plan that I like to call out. Uh, that we're striving to, uh. Implement around the Mill Pond and Aborigon River, which is, one is building community and the second one is ensuring sustainability. The building community was defined as increasing the visibility and use of existing outdoors areas. And ensuring sustainability is, um, was defined as enhancing pass, passive. Open space access, improving water quality. Managing invasive species and the ecosystems around the pond and implementing green infrastructure. So, uh, if you'll indulge me, I know many of you are familiar with those. Uh, goals, but those goals have been in place and been. Goals that the town is strewn, strewn to, uh, achieve for over a hundred years. Going back to the Kellaway Park Plan of nineteen eleven of a century ago. The Mill Pond was designed to be an anchor. Uh, for all the other public buildings and that we now see around the Mill Pond and Aborigon area. The rivers and ponds are rec, in Winchester were recognized as assets for their picturesque settings. And pleasant paths for recreation and enjoyment. There have been attempts to acquire, uh, the, the site where this building is now situated or going to be built as a public park. But they have failed over the years and now what we, as a result of that, what we have is a laundry building sitting in this, uh, site. And so we would hope that we could improve, uh, whatever goes in there next beyond what we have now. Now the Mill Pond area is protected by town bylaws and wetland regulations that do provide some. Uh, protection in real, in relation to advancing to these goals. In two thousand and fifteen, the Conservation Commission got a grant from, uh, the, from ANCA called. And developed a plan called the Aborigon Initiative. And this was focused specifically on the sustainability goal, which was to improve the alcohol, ecological health, sustainability and beauty of. Junk, Junkins Pond and Mill Pond. The select board approved that plan and there was a, uh, small annual budget. Created to maintain, uh, and improve the shoreline. If you look at the, uh, shoreline now, though, you could make a judgment as to whether or not this investment. In, uh, managing the sustainability of the pond is, uh, is adequate. I would submit that it is not adequate.
Bill, do you need a little bit more, do you need a little bit more time? I, I don't want to cut you off.
Yep, so I just want to say in two thousand and nineteen, um. The Mill Pond was designated as a cultural heritage district. And, uh, with the aim of improve, uh, implementing a riverwalk showcasing, um. The, the art in, in town, the tri, tri community, Greenway was opened in June of nineteen. And, and the, the Winchester plant master plan, which I just referenced, was adopted in, in twenty twenty. The feedback, uh, that I wanted to give you is that I see that there are risks and opportunities from the renderings that I've seen of this plan. Uh, the rendering shows very nice open space and, uh, green space and planning and chairs and resting places. However, those. Pictures include pictures of both private land and town land, which are contiguous with each other. So I have a question with regard to the, uh. Supporting community open space. How can we be assured that the development does not become a gated community? Where with fences, hedges, or even get off the grass signs that might be placed? Because the residents of the condos don't want or, or feel like that they're being opposed upon in, in this, in these green spaces that are shown. With respect to sustainability, what role or responsibility can the development take? On to support the maintenance and sustainability of the banks of the Mill Pond, particularly since the condo residents. Most, most directly benefit from this right now publicly tax payer supported public green space. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Bill. Um. Uh, I appreciate the comment. Um, I'm going to hold off on seeing if anybody wants to address it because. I want to see if there are other, uh, members of the public who would might like to make public comments. And. Seeing none, I will close public comments. And I will, um. Turn to, uh. David and Paul at Al. Um, uh, if you want to address that now, if you don't want to address that, I, I would welcome, I'd welcome if you want to address. What was just raised, or if you'd like to have a chance to talk and then just address it later on, I'm, I'm open either way.
Thank you and, uh, and thank you for the question, Bill, and we heard similar sentiments, um. In a different capacity when Bill was speaking as part of the Conservation Commission, so. We appreciate the comments and, and take them seriously because. We also don't want this to be a gated community. It's a much more exciting opportunity for us. To, you know, sort of engage the public with the private. That's been our theme in many of the buildings that we develop. We sort of look at it, for example, our lobby, uh, we're even hoping the, the retail space on the front of the building, which we haven't really talked too much about today. But we're looking for that to also be sort of a, a hospitality center that kind of blurs the lines between. What is community, you know, uh, publicly accessible, uh, like any retail space would be. And what is sort of, um, you know, more private or residence only. So we really think it's a more exciting experience for everybody. When, when they're, when they're melded together. So. Uh, we can formalize our commitment to ensure that it's not a gated community, uh, through our condo documents. Um, we. Will find a way, uh, we'll make this commitment now, uh, to, uh. Ensure, you know, right in the governing documents of the building, uh, that the area, um, along the waterfront, um, may. You know, remains, uh, publicly accessible in, through the retail space and, uh, you know, through the bike path. So. We hear your concern and I think we can address it. In terms of the maintenance of the banks of Mill Pond, I think. That's a challenge, more challenging situation because again, we, we went down that road and we were stopped from, uh. Doing anything with, uh, you know, it required an act of, um, town meeting to ensure that, uh. There was, it was considered to be sort of a land disposition if we wanted to do some maintenance and, uh. Uh, work along the town owned land. So that's a little trickier one for us. Um, but certainly, um, we can address the first, uh, quite easily.
Thank you. Um, and, uh. Are there additional questions from the board for now? Um. And if not, I would turn to Taylor and ask him, um, to help guide us through the next steps as far as. I know you still have a number of meetings that, um, that you're returning to, but help us with our next steps in this process, um. Which is definitely moving along and I think moving in the right direction, I think is what you heard from everyone tonight. Um, moving in the right direction, but Taylor, if you can help direct us as how we should be moving forward, um, our next steps.
So there will be a C B D R S meeting, uh, this upcoming Thursday. Uh, that's the eighteenth, I think. Um, in the Mystic Valley Room Town Hall, I'll be in person. Um, that is a public meeting. Anyone's, uh, able to join, uh, again, for those, um. Who don't know, the C B D R S is a, is a, uh, is official committee, um, in the C B D, uh. Zoning bylaw that is made up of the design review committee and the historical commission. Uh, planning board members are encouraged to, to join as well. It's a rather, it's, it's the time to come together to, to talk design in a more comprehensive way. Uh, with, with all, um, advisory committees. Um, so we have that on, on the eighteenth and then the next, our next meeting will be October seventh. Uh, to the applicant, I would encourage you, um, to discuss, but not make any, um, any changes to the, um, to the design just yet. I would wait until, I would wait until whatever comes out of Thursday, um. Uh, to, to, uh, to make any changes, just, um, just to make sure that, um, we hear what, what happens there. And, um, I think that we're on a, on a good, good track to, uh, meet again on October seventh and continue the, the discussion. Yep, you may ask your question.
I'm sorry, I'm muted. Sorry. Uh, yes, Paul, go ahead or whoever's there. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, we were, uh, hoping on October seventh. Um, to be in a position to address all of the concerns and if we adequately do so. We would respectfully ask that we, uh, be considered, uh, for a vote that evening. Uh, if you think it's appropriate and if we've addressed things to your satisfaction, we are. On, under a bit of a time constraint and we've been moving along swiftly and appreciate everyone's cooperation. In that endeavor, just, just want to highlight that, um, you know, as a request, if you think it can be done, we. We'd love it to be done on the seventh.
And I, I. I, I don't want to presuppose how the committee will decide to move forward on the seventh. At the same time. Uh, I assure you that we are working with all due diligence to try to, um. Help you meet your timelines while making sure everything else is addressed. So, um. I have no desire to drag this out any longer than it needs to go simply for, uh, more meeting sake. Um, so. It, if we are in a place to do that, that would be wonderful. Um, and I would encourage you to, um. Continue to communicate with Taylor about things that, um, may be needed for, uh, for that meeting that night if, if we are at that place. And I, I, I'm not prepared to say that we are, will or will not be at that time, but certainly I hope so.
Terrific, thank you.
Uh, Paul, just a recommendation, could you? Inform the board, right, uh, when you intend on submitting your N O I to CONCOM and when your next meetings are, just so that they know. What the CONCOM process is for timing?
Yes, I, I believe if Larry is on, he could be more specific, but I think we've completed the N O I. Uh, and we're wanting to have this meeting, but I believe we're now ready to submit. And we're wanting to have this meeting, but I believe we're now ready to submit. And as such, given the Conservation Commission's process, I believe we would qualify or I believe Elaine noted that we could be heard up to twelve days later, which would put us up to the October fourteenth Conservation Commission if they were able to put us on the agenda that evening.
Thank you. Is there anything else for tonight from any members of the board or the applicants? Seeing none, I would welcome a motion to continue the public hearing for both projects since we didn't specifically ever until our next meeting of October seventh.
So moved.
Yeah. Second.
Okay, before we vote, is there a concern, Carrie, before we?
No, I just if there's a significant issue that ends up coming out of the CBD RS meeting, I I I think there we might want to leave ourselves open to the flexibility of scheduling something for like the thirtieth. I I just if I can't imagine what will come up. But I think I think the town would like to see this.
You can change you can change it with an agreement between the board and the applicant as long as it's as long as it's stamped in with the clerk. That's fine.
Okay, but it's a public hearing. What's the notification window?
It's that's a good question, but it's there's there's there there's more there's more leniency to it.
Okay, okay. As long as that's all fine, then that's the end of my discussion here.
We need a roll call vote on that. Jack?
I.
Carrie?
I.
Nick?
I.
John?
I.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing what happens and please do feel free to keep us posted along the way. Thank you. With that, we move into our business agenda. We start with two sets of minutes that were sent around by Ian that I saw. I had comments on those minutes and Jack had comments on those minutes. I only sent mine out today, so people may not have seen them and Jack sent it out maybe yesterday. Do people feel prepared to vote either on the minutes as as amended by each of us or in some other way? And if so, I welcome a motion.
I move that we approve both Sessa minutes with the suggested changes by Brian and myself.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we require a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Nick?
I.
Jack?
I.
Carrie?
I.
Chair votes aye. Thank you to all the work that everybody put in on those minutes. I really appreciate it. That brings us to board and staff updates. Do the board members have any updates that they would like to give from committees or Jack, I saw you raise your hand. If you go ahead, that would be great.
Yeah, the remarkably, you told me that we wouldn't have any meetings on the committee on names, but we did have one. Friday. There was a suggestion from the precinct eight chair and clerk to name the new Leonard Field Playground after the late Jimmy Johnson. The 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 members of the committee reacted positively in support of recognizing Mr. Johnson for all the work and dedication he gave to our town over many, many, many years. On the other hand, Phil Frateroli, a member of the committee, felt that Jimmy's involvement in the town went far beyond just the playground. And he deserved more than than just that and suggested, for instance, that we might want to consider naming the Public Works Building after him, idea which we all liked. There was further question. No one seemed to know the what the governing rules are with that pertain to committee on names, whether or not we can name more one or more more than one things after a person. And we we adjourned the meeting with a promise to look into it and we're going to get together again soon with an eye toward making a proposal to the spring twenty twenty six town meeting.
Thank you. I I I have a quick question on that. Is there not a requirement? Am I mistaken that there's a requirement that I want to be delicate about this. One must wait five years.
We talked about that. I mean, you know, the town common was named after Whip Saltmarsh. He was still alive. A town meeting voted on it. So.
Just 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 I just want to raise that. I don't I don't have an opinion.
We raised the same question and apparently.
Brian Vernalia Bell Tower is coming.
Hey, actually, Vernalia Place instead of thirty three.
Actually, the street naming streets is our job. I don't know if you knew that.
I did not know that.
It is true.
I did not know that. Well, certainly Jimmy is more than deserving. I've known him for a long time. Certainly deserving of recognition in the town. So thank you.
And the other bit of news was Housing Partnership Trust. John didn't mention it, but we voted to endorse the Affordable Housing Trust's request for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the CPA funds for the renovation of one sixty Forest Street. Something that we might want to consider if they request it of us.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any committee updates? That they want to share?
The WCCP met last night and voted in favor of one sixty Forest Street. Ginfield. Part of the pickleball court. Leonard Field Basketball Courts. It was a little over one point one million dollars.
Right.
Virtually everything was funded. Some reductions, I think pickleball. We fund we we discussed it and we funded money so that they can do the engineering and planning sound studies. And then we kind of look at it the next next cycle. It was it was a big ask. It was three hundred and fifty thousand. We really couldn't commit that much, not not having plans. So but it's moving forward.
What was the request for historical renovation?
Hundred and twelve thousand.
For what?
The Sanborn House.
Okay.
And we we endorsed it.
The house or the carriage house?
No, the 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 house, the carriage house wasn't before us.
That's a capital issue. That's not a.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we 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 debated that with Historical Commission before I came here and but it was premature back then. But anyway, yes, good. Sanborn House.
Sanborn House got the one twelve.
Good.
Hey, I just had a question and and I don't think it's a question for tonight, but regarding the carriage house. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but I I know that that you, Brian, on the Capitol Committee voted to demolish it. And I just was wanted to get some clarity that that was as as you, not as our representative, or or maybe we can get, you know, think about that. And then and maybe we can revisit it before the spring if we're not all in support of it. I think my my understanding is that the is that the building is is structurally sound. And then and then if you, you know, it would cost a lot less than three hundred thousand to to paint and remove debris, secure the windows and to fix the small leak and leave it at that. But but I guess I I just wanted to understand how how do we relate to the Capitol Committee and and how does your vote relate to us?
I'm happy to address that. So I am appointed by the Planning Board to the Capital Planning Committee. And I bring things, information from our board to the Capital Planning Committee. I bring things from the Capital Planning Committee back to our board. However, I am a a full member of the Capital Planning Committee. I just like John is a full member of the WCCP. And he votes, does not come and ask us how we would like him to vote on the WCCP issues. He he votes as a member of that committee. And we can certainly give him feedback on how we think the Planning Board feels about these, any projects that he has or any projects Capital Planning Committee has. But when I vote, I'm voting as an individual on that board, just like anyone else who's appointed to another board. And in my own defense, I ranked the the carriage house last among twenty six projects. It was the lowest ranked project I put in there. However, that is not the the way the capital planning cycle works is, I mean, there's there is a ranking process and and it made it up high enough to rank to fund. So I I I can't say anything more than that that we all we all represent. We come from the Planning Board to Housing Partnership or WCCP or Street Trees, but we don't bring a vote from the Planning Board as far as how we rank projects on any of these committees. We ultimately serve as individuals who are appointed by the Planning Board. So.
I I think that's a dangerous allowance to I think I think there's merit to straw pulling the crowd before issues that might be sensitive to membership, though. I mean, I I I agree, like I, you know, having briefly seen how capital works, I understand that no matter what you came in with, it it's not going to be a project that the town chooses to invest in heavily. But I think I think it's an interesting point. You know, I like, are we going to weigh in on, you know, whether or not the Public Works Building gets renamed Jimmy Johnson? Like honestly, Jack, have at it. We trust your judgment, but but there are issues that I think the the board has attachments to, and I think there is merit to straw pulling the group before we represent in the, I mean, I, you know, that I I I it's I think the chair is a very difficult seat and I think it's tricky, first of all, to manage the time demands, but I do think the the privilege and the burden of it is of any of us serving on any of the committees, not just the chairs that we do sit alone in the room, but we represent the board. So I I appreciate next point. I think that's something that any of us on any of our committees could be thoughtful about.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I I mean, we don't want to recommend to town meeting to fund the demolition as 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 a group.
Again, like we don't all agree on anything. That's why we're here. By different parts of the town, but we would a discussion about some of these hot button issues is probably worthwhile.
Yeah, I mean, maybe in 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 a different on a different night, you know, where we where it's not the the eleventh hour. You know, we we could possibly discuss an appropriation, you know, where we paint the trim, remove the debris, better security on the windows, you know, fix the leak for a lot less than three hundred thousand. You know, or something like that, or at least have that conversation at some point in the future.
I I would I would, if the Planning Board wants to make a recommendation of some sort like that or a town meeting, I am happy to do that. I have voted different. I voted on one way on various projects and then voted differently depending on what hat I'm wearing. And I I anticipate and hope that every person, including John and WCCP, is looking at those projects. And he's not saying, I hope, how does this impact the Planning Board? I hope he's saying, how is this the best way to steward the WCCP money? As our appointee over there. I think it would be a really slippery slope if we start saying that the representatives to all of these committees, and we have a lot of representatives, must come back and make sure that they are voting the way, I mean, we we'd have to have votes. I think it would be a very complicated situation and not really what's intended. I'm happy to have this conversation at some point if people think that's a direction we want to go.
But I I think if I if I may, I think what Carrie was suggesting is that if there's an issue that the Planning Board is, it would would likely be interested in if we have the leisure of time, we might want to just informally poll poll our our fellow members, say, I, you know, with phone calls or emails. So what do you guys think of this? This is this is this is trending with this committee. This way, do you agree or not?
Exactly.
Fair enough. I I couldn't have ranked it lower, to be honest with you. Twenty six out of twenty six. I mean, if I heard from all of you who wanted it.
Maybe it's just saying I had a feeling you guys would want to save it and I ranked it low, but and the helpful part of sitting on the different boards is you get put in perspect, you know, we 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 plan, but we don't fund and we are we are a rounding error in this town financially.
So are there?
That's it for me. I don't I don't want to, you know, I think I'm ready to.
Well, so I have a quick I have a quick update that I think is somewhat important. Is that coming out of a Carrie and I were in a meeting at the State of the Town where we overheard the school committee discussing how they wanted to do some GIS work. And they were going to be putting a a town meeting article to appropriate funds for GIS consulting services, which is something that we are looking to be able to expand our GIS capabilities. So after I heard this, I spoke with members of the school committee. I then spoke with Taylor. Taylor has spoken with people on the school department. I don't think it's been finalized what's moving forward. Well, what are this is all new to you. It's since the last meeting we had, and I've only just been learning about it. They put forward an article to town meeting tonight. Earlier, right before this meeting, I was watching their meeting to appropriate funds to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds for professional consulting services to assist and or train school department and planning department in use of geographic information systems, technology. These services may include but not limited to analyzing and mapping the residence locations of Winchester residents and students, assessing current and projected enrollment patterns, supporting planning efforts related to housing, zoning, transportation and public facilities, and upgrading existing software as needed or take any action there too.
I like that.
This just came out, just just hot off the press. They voted this earlier at six o'clock and I quickly printed it out. So this is a direction they're going at town meeting. Now Taylor and I have talked about this. He's still working with them to see, is this something that we can share? Is this a a way to move forward our GIS capabilities? And Taylor, I don't, I I I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I don't know if you can sort of tell us what your thoughts are on this and whether you think this is a direction that we should continue to. We have an option if we want to co-sponsor this. We could simply also support it or endorse it or speak at town meeting in favor of it. But Taylor, I know you've had some conversations and I'm curious what your thoughts are for the committee. I know it's nine thirty, but if we wanted to co-sponsor, it's it's now or later, I guess.
Yeah, so I I still need to know more. I mean, since it just excuse me, since it just happened, I need to know more about about what the what the possibilities are with them. But this is a fantastic opportunity. This is something that I think, I mean, I'm speaking from the planning department. We desperately need this help. And if we have the opportunity to potentially get it a little bit sooner than we thought we would, especially since we were planning on having it as an additional ask to our fiscal year budget. I think that that we can work really well with the school department to to get this done. So anything that we can do, it'd be my 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 suggestion that anything that we can do to to support this article, whether that's co-sponsorship or even just standing up at town meeting and support it. I mean, the planning planning department is in the language of the article, right? So any support whatsoever will be greatly appreciated by myself and certainly Ian, because Ian does most of the GIS work. And yes, it's a good thing.
And maybe we could get a member of the school committee to come speak to us on at our next meeting and seek our endorsement or something like that.
So they they have sought, they are seeking our endorsement. So at their meeting tonight, they were hoping we would co-sponsor it. And so I was at two meetings. They had a meeting last week I was at where I, they talked about it. And then I conferred with Taylor and I came back. And then I the the tonight's meeting, right before this meeting, I was in meetings all day long. They released this article that they voted and they would like us to co-sponsor it. It'd be cleaner. I'm not saying we should. It'd be cleaner if we co-sponsored it now because it would allow us to be in the warrant would have us co-sponsoring it. Uh, be uh, in the warrant would have us co-sponsoring it. Um, it also allows us to move this forward. Um, with the backing of all the people who want the schools to get this, um, which have a lot more supporters perhaps than. The Planning Board groupies. I think there's more school committee groupies than planning board groupies. Um, so we have an option to co-sponsor this. Um, we could probably co-sponsor it after the, our warrant deadline. It just would be a little cleaner. Or we could just um, vote to endorse it and then stand up and say, we totally support this. Um, I'd leave that open to you guys if you think, um, you know, we heard what Taylor said that this is a good thing. Um, maybe the details aren't all worked out, but um, this is something that would be good for us to be able to at least support.
Which, which school committee member, excuse me, which school committee member seems to be most enthused about this?
Um, well, I spoke to the chair and the vice chair, but I would say the vice chair, but um, it's mostly coming from the school department. If, this is something that would um, aid, you know, none of us know how to use GIS, at least I, I will say, I don't know how to G, use GIS and neither do the school committee. Um, members. This would be something the school department and the planning department would be using, obviously to our benefit. Um, but I don't see any of us sitting down at a um, GIS network or whatever, however it works. I don't, I don't even want to pretend I understand how it works. So.
Would they be expecting um, us to share the cost of this from, out of our budget?
No, this is a request for town meeting to get funding from town meeting.
Okay.
This is a request, um.
General funds, general funds, I guess.
General funds, yes, um, which would um, allow us to be able to do some work and allow them to do some work.
Right.
Also show that we are one big happy family and that when two different departments need something, we don't send two different requests. To town meeting, but instead we send one request to town meeting. Um, it's a good look, if it, if we can make it work, it's a good look.
Perhaps then we should get the appropriate uh, administrat- school administration person to come to our next meeting.
Uh, I, I'm happy for that. Um, uh, like I said, Taylor has been working with Andrew Marin behind the scenes to understand all the details. Um, I, I've been relying on them to understand this better than I do. So I'm happy to um.
Yeah, or, or, or if Taylor just wants to give us a report and, and recommendation and then we can vote on it, just to keep it simple.
Yep.
Don't want Andrew to sit through two more hearings on nine seventy-two and.
No. I, I think that would be less than ideal. Does, so that's like a path forward for everyone?
Yep.
Great, yeah, exciting.
Thank you. I just, I'm sorry it takes some extra time, but um, been following this a lot behind the scenes and I wanted to sort of, you know, do a data dump with you guys, so. Any additional updates? I, I'm sorry, I cut off the staff updates. Uh, it's nine thirty and if you have to update, tell us and if not, we're happy to um.
See. I will pass for now.
Okay, perfect. Um, I would welcome, uh, our next meeting is on October seventh, as we've said. I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second.
Uh, roll call, Nick?
I.
Jack?
I.
John?
I.
Carrie?
I and good night.
I, chair votes aye. Good night. Thank you, WinCam. Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, uh, more, our last uh, viewer. Thank you very much.
So our number of fans, good night, Henry.
Good night, Henry.
Good night, my friends.